Hi, I'm Diego Hoick, Argyle Court. If you'll excuse me, Council President, a moment. I would like to thank Michelle and Jamelle as they are in Safety Committee. It is not related to the topic at hand, but I'm not sure when I'm going to be able to do this again.
We will, just so, great question, Diego. I should have mentioned this. There will be a public comment section after our resolution, just as normal. This is a normal council meeting. So there'll be an opportunity for people to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, which is this one resolution. But I know I didn't mention it. So go ahead, Diego.
I'll take a moment to thank them for, as members of the Safety Committee, they recommended some flashing speed limit signs near Argyle Court and Springfield Avenue. And I know everybody in our group chat is very happy with that, so thank you very much. I have two simple questions. Last night, our attorney mentioned that Milburn got into hot water for changes to their plan. And I wanted to understand a little bit further how any changes to any element that's presently in the plan, any projects currently in the plan, if we were to take out one of those projects, what would happen with that? Would we open ourselves up to a challenge? And related to that, I understand that there's challenges and builder remedied lawsuit. With this, we're getting immunity from builder remedied lawsuit comment. You should vote for it. But understanding that if we lose a challenge, are we in the same space as if we lose a builder remedied lawsuit? That's that. And oh, one final question. The project on Ashwood by Reckon Myers Flowers, are both lots zoned business or is one of those lots zoned residential? And does that mean that the project would have to go before zoning, before being approved? Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, Chantel Lemmon, Bigman Road. I would like to address the council regarding process, communication, and public input. Some of these comments are a repeat of my comments to the planning board last night, but not all. The deadlines associated with the affordable housing plan shared on June 13th and being discussed tonight were not a surprise. The city has known for many months, arguably years, that this deadline was looming and that a comprehensive credible plan was required. Yet no plan was shared with the public for input until 11 days ago. In April, one of the city's planners said they will present a draft at a May planning board meeting. In May, the review of the draft housing plan happened in closed session at the planning board, not with the public. Obviously, the public has a lot to say about this plan, especially regarding the proposed development at Broad, Ashwood, and Morris. In order to meet the deadline, you will vote on the plan tonight, meaning there's no chance public comment will be incorporated into the plan because there's just no time to do that. We need a real commitment to listening from our planning board and council consistently, openly, and without delay in the future. Last night, the planner confirmed there will be a challenge period through August. So what is the plan for this period and what role will council play? When will the planning board present a revised plan to Summit residents that incorporates public feedback? Will we have multiple opportunities to revise the plan? Will the planning board and council have an opportunity to change the plan after August? Let's not make this challenge period opaque and rushed as we just did with the step concluding tonight. The planning board's role is to make recommendations, but ultimately, it's the council that's accountable for the decisions. And you are accountable to the residents you serve. Please take a more active role in this process as we move into a phase of anticipated litigation, spending of taxpayer dollars, and decision-making that will have a tremendous impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dennis White, Tulip Street. I spoke last night at the planning board. I'll make some additional comments. You say it's going to be challenged. It doesn't have to be. If it was done properly, it wouldn't have to be challenged. But by going into it done improperly, there is going to be a challenge and we are going to lose control of the process. The plan will be determined by a judge, not by the city, and by an arbitration litigation process, not by the city. So this plan is really flawed. I said that last night. It's cynical in outlook and irresponsible in the execution. It effectively signals that the city has no intention of complying with New Jersey's housing laws. And in essence, it says, "We're not going to create any meaningful amount of housing. Go ahead and sue us," as you just said, "challenge it." The plan interprets the new housing law in a way that invites a legal challenge. It guarantees a legal challenge. And why would the council approve something that guarantees a legal challenge? As you said, you have no choice because of the way the process was. Many surrounding municipalities, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Westfield, Chatham, even Milburn, have applied the 25% rule correctly. Milburn, that is, they do a vacant land analysis, an RDP, and they still commit to facilitating at least 25% or more of their prospective need. Summit's plan addresses only 10% of the prospective need at the most, inadequate. It takes an adversarial stance and adopts an interpretation that would require the creation of only one new unit to meet our RDP. One new unit to meet our RDP. That's really sad. The plan refers to some additional units that may or may not happen, but the total amount of new units in the plan is 11. Four at Harmon Holdings, which is probably the worst development site the city could have ever selected, and seven at Broad Street and NBC Overlay Zone. Is that really what this common council thinks is needed? 11 units over the next 10 years? 11 units? The city just concluded six months of litigation with the Fair Housing Center, resulting in a consent order that required the development of 27 affordable units in a specific location and in a specific timeframe because Summit didn't comply with its 2016 settlement agreement. That's what happens when you don't comply. A consent order, litigation with fair share happens, and that's what's going to happen with this one. This sets the stage for more litigation, likely years at significant cost to Summit taxpayers. No longer can council fees be paid from that Affordable Housing Trust Fund. They'll be paid by Summit taxpayers. So by going into a challenge, we're accepting that the city will be paying for council's fees. Over the past year, we've suggested a better approach.
Could you wrap up, please?
Yep. Using the firehouse site to do 50 to 60 units, which would meet about 75% of the city's true prospective need. It's a better plan.
Thank you. Other comments from the public, please?
Yes. Well, thank you for your hard work. I know that this is not easy and there are a lot of issues, but I do want to echo what Chantel said about, you know, kind of engaging the public in a more proactive way, you know, within a reasonable timeframe. You know, we're just hearing about this and obviously, we're not too happy. I'm a Summit resident. I'm an East Summit resident. I have lived on both sides of town, but it's very, it's disheartening to me because we've seen overdevelopment in Summit, East Summit specifically, for quite some time where, you know, its zoning laws be damned, we're just going to cram in as many houses as we can, generate more revenue. I understand all this stuff, but you know, the impact on the local community is pretty extreme and it's getting worse and worse all the time and it's going unabated. And this is, this feels like the tipping point, to be honest. You know, I, I, you know, what really surprised me about the proposal, honestly, is that we're going to put four units, or we would like to put four units, well, 20 units, four affordable housing units on the worst intersection in Summit. That's all of Summit, not just East Summit. And we apparently have the ability, I don't know, but I would think we would have the ability to add an additional four on the old firehouse site. So I'm just wondering why that was not a viable plan. I, we never heard that. We never heard an explanation for that. So I'm just, I'm just kind of a little baffled. I'm sure if there had been more public input, we might not be in this situation because you're going to have a lot of pissed off people here in East Summit. I'm just, you know, so that's all I'd like to say. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Just could you give your name and your address for the record, please?
No one else had to do that. Why me? Okay. My name's Fritz Ollom, O-L-L-O-M. I'm at Nine Russell Place.
Thank you very much. I've got you, Diego.
Hi, I'm Risa Gorlik. I'm at Nine Russell Place. I spoke last night. I was really angry. I'm still really angry. I'm trying not to be angry in how I present. I know that this is a hard job. I appreciate that you're all volunteers. I know you make no money doing this, but the choices and the decisions that you're making affect our lives, and once you put up a building, it's going to be there for a long time. My big concern is safety and the timeline that you've given us to look at this. I'm an academic. I'm really good at deadlines, but this needs to be revised and resubmitted by your deadline on 6:30, which is, you've got another week. And I'm hoping that you will see it in your hearts to say that this was a poorly planned project at a really terrible intersection with serious environmental concerns, that a quick Google search would have yielded tremendous results as to the types of remediation that will be needed for a dry cleaner to put apartments above this. As I mentioned last night, the chemicals in dry cleaning fluids last for decades, if not hundreds of years. It's in the soil. It permeates the air and the water, and it's a forever chemical that you cannot get rid of. So you're going to put 20 units on a really terrible intersection in a not really pretty part of town, where I don't know why anybody would want to live there, but that's another story, in a, in a building that really doesn't look like an architect designed, because I have an architect school at my university and I used the architecture library yesterday at NJIT. That just doesn't make any sense and like, it, it needs to be rethought. You can't put people on top of this. There's going to be lawsuits because people will get sick. And then what would the city do? The mayor is a doctor. These are serious concerns. The chemicals are carcinogenic. I want everybody to be safe. I want to live a happy life in Summit like I have the last 16 years. We've been here long term. My husband's been here longer, and this just can't happen. You have to have input from East Summit. You can't keep redeveloping and putting in high-density housing in East Summit. 50% of all that, you know, of all the redevelopment is happening in East Summit, which is a really small sliver. I brought a map yesterday. I left my stuff at home today. I brought a poster instead. Please, please, please reconsider this. Think about the safety of the residents and do the right thing. We want you to make the deadline. I know that's important, but there's going to be lawsuits regardless because people will get sick. And, and we need to, we need to come up with something better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11975, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Summit endorsing the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. I move this for a final adoption. Second?
All right. At this time, is anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this resolution?
Good afternoon, not good evening. I'm Diego Hoick, Argyle Court. If you'll excuse me, Council President, a moment. I would like to thank Michelle and Jamelle as they are in Safety Committee. It is not related to the topic at hand, but I'm not sure when I'm going to be able to do this again.
We will, just so, great question, Diego. I should have mentioned this. There will be a public comment section after our resolution, just as normal. This is a normal council meeting. So there'll be an opportunity for people to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, which is this one resolution. But I know I didn't mention it. So you, go ahead, Diego.
I'll take a moment to thank them for, as members of the Safety Committee, they recommended some flashing speed limit signs near Argyle Court and Springfield Avenue. And I know everybody in our group chat is very happy with that, so thank you very much. I have two simple questions. Last night, our attorney mentioned that Milburn got into hot water for changes to their plan, and I wanted to understand a little bit further how any changes to any element that's presently in the plan, any projects currently in the plan, if we were to take out one of those projects, what would happen with that? Would we open ourselves up to a, to a challenge? And related to that, I understand that there's challenges and builder remedied lawsuit with this. We're getting immunity from builder remedied lawsuit comment. You should vote for it. But understanding that if we lose a challenge, are we in the same space as if we lose a builder remedied lawsuit? That's that. And oh, one, one final question. The project on Ashwood by Reckon Myers Flowers, are both lots zoned business or is one of those lots zoned residential? And does that mean that the project would have to go before zoning, before being approved? Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, Chantel Lemmon, Bigman Road. I would like to address the council regarding process, communication, and public input. Some of these comments are a repeat of my comments to the planning board last night, but not all. The deadlines associated with the affordable housing plan shared on June 13th and being discussed tonight were not a surprise. The city has known for many months, arguably years, that this deadline was looming and that a comprehensive credible plan was required. Yet no plan was shared with the public for input until 11 days ago. In April, one of the city's planners said they will present a draft at a May planning board meeting. In May, the review of the draft housing plan happened in closed session at the planning board, not with the public. Obviously, the public has a lot to say about this plan, especially regarding the proposed development at Broad, Ashwood, and Morris. In order to meet the deadline, you will vote on the plan tonight, meaning there's no chance public comment will be incorporated into the plan because there's just no time to do that. We need a real commitment to listening from our planning board and council consistently, openly, and without delay in the future. Last night, the planner confirmed there will be a challenge period through August. So what is the plan for this period and what role will council play? When will the planning board present a revised plan to Summit residents that incorporates public feedback? Will we have multiple opportunities to revise the plan? Will the planning board and council have an opportunity to change the plan after August? Let's not make this challenge period opaque and rushed as we just did with the step concluding tonight. The planning board's role is to make recommendations, but ultimately, it's the council that's accountable for the decisions. And you are accountable to the residents you serve. Please take a more active role in this process as we move into a phase of anticipated litigation, spending of taxpayer dollars, and decision-making that will have a tremendous impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Dennis White, Tulip Street. I spoke last night at the planning board. I'll make some additional comments. You say it's going to be challenged. It doesn't have to be. If it was done properly, it wouldn't have to be challenged. But by going into it done improperly, there is going to be a challenge and we are going to lose control of the process. The plan will be determined by a judge, not by the city, and by an arbitration litigation process, not by the city. So this plan is really flawed. I said that last night. It's cynical in outlook and irresponsible in the execution. It effectively signals that the city has no intention of complying with New Jersey's housing laws. And in essence, it says, "We're not going to create any meaningful amount of housing. Go ahead and sue us," as you just said, "challenge it." The plan interprets the new housing law in a way that invites a legal challenge. It guarantees a legal challenge. And why would the council approve something that guarantees a legal challenge? You, as you said, you have no choice because of the way the process was. Many surrounding municipalities, Berkeley Heights, New Providence, Westfield, Chatham, even Milburn, have applied the 25% rule correctly. Milburn, that is, they do a vacant land analysis, an RDP, and they still commit to facilitating at least 25% or more of their prospective need. Summit's plan addresses only 10% of the prospective need at the most, inadequate. It takes an adversarial stance and adopts an interpretation that would require the creation of only one new unit to meet our RDP. One new unit to meet our RDP. That's really sad. The plan refers to some additional units that may or may not happen, but the total
Julia Conley, Pearl Street, 25 Pearl Street, Summit. Last night, I also had a comment, and I asked the question about zoning. You apparently have to change the zoning to implement this plan. And from what I understand, and from what I was told last night, zoning really has not yet been changed. So my question is, how can you approve a plan where the zoning has not been already changed? That's one of my questions. Then, on the, you know, questioning on the safety, from what I could see on the plans, the exit is going to be on Broad Street, which is a county road, and they're proposing two feet? That doesn't make sense to me. Then, you turn down the project on Broad Street West because of the, how dense it was. And this project, it seems, is going to be double the density. So all of this doesn't make sense. So as everybody's asking, you really have to go back and consider what we're doing here. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. It's going to hurt the neighborhood tremendously, the school, the environment. So we really have to decide what we're going to do here before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your service. I'm Steve Eschott, 13 Ashwood Avenue. I have an adjoining wall with the proposed, the proposed building. First of all, I'm not here to be political or anything like that. It's more comments and questions asking, as far as the adjoining wall, what assurances will I have from the council that you'll hold the builders accountable so that there's no disruption to my business? I'm, my head's in the sand, working all day long, and I never do this, but I, you know, I need to make sure there's no disruption to my business. And I'm wondering if I can give you guys, well, you already have that, but that's the adjoining wall, and this is a picture of the inside, and those frame samples are going to be rumbling when they start a construction. And I'm not against the project. I'm not for it. I'm just looking out for myself. So that was the number-one concern was that, you know, my business is not disrupted. The number-two concern is the environmental issues that could arise. How, I, I feel like I should have real time, I'm like three feet away from that wall for eight to 12 hours a day. I need to make sure I'm not exposed to anything that might be in the ground when the dust starts to come up. You know, I got to look out for myself. So those are the two issues that I have, questions. Like I said, I'm not being political about it. The, the building right now is in disrepair. It's, it looks terrible. It's been in disrepair. Even when the cleaners owned it, it was a disaster. Something's got to be, you know, built there, and I'm not against it, but I just want to make sure that you guys look out for the small business owner next to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you leave your photos up here for us?
Anywhere?
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm a resident at 26 Russell Place. Madam Mayor, honorable council members, the main reason why I'm here is pretty much, I'm agreeing to everything that is going on, maybe a devil's advocate. I'm very pro-development. I think that dry cleaners look very bad, but this plan needs to be revised. We have an issue in Russell Place. We can't even get out of a driveway anymore. I am there for over 30 years, and it gets worse and worse every single day, especially in school time. It takes us five minutes just to get out of a driveway. It's horrible just getting inside of Morris and Russell. By the grace of God, no one has crashed me. People tend to park their cars in Russell Place and leave them there all day long. We need to do something. Yeah, we need to, we need to comply with the 25% affordable housing requirements that the city needs to come up to. We need to take care of that, but these 20 units is not reasonable. You need to revise this plan. We have the recreation center. Children walk through that street all the time through Russell Place. Russell Place is a cut street to everyone. You have Dunkin' Donuts in the corner of Ashwood and Broad Street. Don't forget about the traffic of the gas station. Getting to the school is horrible. I'm here over 30 years. I'm a real estate broker. I work all over the state of New Jersey. Russell Place looks like any street in Irvington and Newark, and it's tarnished, but it still has beautiful places. It still does not allow anyone to park overnight. That used to be like this in Summit. Now cars are left overnight. This is not respectful of the citizens in East Summit. It's not about a Democrat issue, a Republican issue. We are taxpayers like the rest of the citizens in the other side of Summit. A project like this will not be put in a mansion area. We are taxpayers. I pay my taxes on time. So yeah, Summit needs to pay for the 25% affordable responsibility, but you need to revise the plan. 20 units do not make any sense. I see in other locations, they're putting buildings in a 20-by-80 lot. You cannot allow this in this beautiful city. We not like the rest of the other places. This is why people come to live in Summit. I raise my children in Summit. I made a sacrifice working two or three jobs to make it here to Summit. You have to listen to us. You are here to represent our interests. We elected you to look for our interests, not the interests of developers, not to make any side deals with anyone. Take care of us.
Are there public comments?
Good evening. Dennis and Harry, 140 Broad Street in Summit. My council president, McKernan, and I watched the meeting last night and found it to be interesting. Was impressed with the knowledge of the attorneys and Joe Burris and others that spoke. And although I did not understand all of the, I should say, everything that was said, I'm glad that I watched it. And what struck me in a very concerned way was the difference between the, what Dennis White said and what Joe Burris said, in that there was a difference of one unit and 18 units. That's a wide gap. I think Summit can do better than one, but I also think Summit can do better than 18. For 36 years, I've been in the forefront of advocating affordable housing in Summit, and I've seen progress. And from COA to the judiciary, judiciary, and all, and in-between. But I guess my, my concern is that, is there a possibility for the council to include persons like Dennis White, who brought out a PhD presentation, I considered because, and Joe Burris brought out another PhD presentation, but they were both different in terms of the number of units? My question is, is there a possibility that this council can have Dennis White and Joe Burris and other attorneys, Nancy Holm and others, sit down around a table and come up with a compromise that will result in Summit gaining the most affordable housing units in round four? I think what has happened over the years is that we rely on the professionals who are paid, but we have non-professionals who are very knowledgeable. There should be an opportunity for those two parties to sit down together, present, compromise, talk, put their heads together, and then present that to council for you to consider both approaches, because you cannot just do it in a public setting like this. Some questions that are asked, we never get answers to because you don't do it that way. So I'm encouraging you and asking you to bring those persons together so that you can come up with a plan that will provide the most affordable housing units under round four. This plan has to be revised. It has some weaknesses, it has some strengths, but I think the weaknesses override the strengths based upon what I heard last night and what I'm hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Other comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
Thank you, council president. I have struggled a lot with this vote coming, coming into this evening. I've struggled quite a bit with this. Ultimately, I can't support this because of the input. Last night, residents came out about this, this building on Ashwood and Broad, and they came out and they said, "You don't understand the struggles that we already have. You don't understand what this is going to do to us." And I can't, I cannot support this after listening to, you know, to all of the comments. I was really compelled in this evening as well. I think that I could be supportive of this if we can put, you know, if we can take this project out. I have a lot of concerns about this project in general and this project being in our plan. And I think there were some questions that some other people had regarding the zoning that I was interested to hear as well. That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilwoman Smallwood.
Thank you, council president. I, I watched the, the meeting last night as well, and, you know, I'm against overdevelopment, period. East Summit, downtown, West Summit, North Summit, South Summit. When you only have so much land, you can only build so much, and it, it seems like the, the odds are against us because if you can't go out, they want you to go up. And we're an urban town. Most people moved out of New York City, Hoboken, and Jersey City to live in a suburban town. Unfortunately, our hand is being forced. We talk about stopping overdevelopment, but yet we talk about building more affordable You can't have one without the other, and it's unfortunate that our hands are being forced to this. We have the veto gallabelling and Glenwood and Weaver Street. Thank you. There's so many, so many thoughts going through my head right now that I've, it, there are apartments that we are neglecting from an affordable housing standpoint. I'd much rather renovate those build, those apartments. When we build, you know, we, I agree with your signs, over, to stop overdevelopment. I really do. But from my understanding, and Nancy, please correct me if I'm wrong, right now, 2/3 of that lot is currently zoned for them just to build whatever they want right now, correct?
2/3 of it approximately is neighborhood business, which has no setbacks, retail on the bottom floor with residential above.
Correct. So 2/3 of that lot?
Yes.
They could tear down the current lot right now, and within 2/3 of that lot, they could build retail on the bottom and residential on the top?
That's correct.
Right. If it's remediated.
Please, please. Please.
I, I understand. I understand that. So even without us including in that plan, that builder who owns that land can do whatever they want with it within the zoning laws, correct?
Yes.
It is currently zoned for them to tear down the current building, build retail on the bottom, and residential on the top?
Yes.
For 2/3 of?
For 2/3 of the property.
For 2/3 of the property.
Yes. One, one lot is in the R5 zone.
Correct. So that's going to have to be remediated anyway, even without this being in our plan. Our firehouse lot, I don't know if most people understand this, but we have diesel gas tanks underneath that firehouse. That will have to be remediated once we, once we decide to put something there. So when, when I bought my house, we had an oil tank in our front yard. That needed to be remediated. I'm sure there are going to be more stricter guidelines in a commercial area when they remediate that portion, correct?
Yes, and this has residential, so it has to be remediated to residential standards in accordance with the DEP.
And they will be involved with this remediation?
Yes, and it'll be at the developer's expense.
Correct. Okay. So even without us including in this in the plan, as it stands right now, the owner of that building could tear down the building, remediate on 2/3 of that land, and still build a residential on the bottom, or retail on the bottom and residential on the top?
Yes.
There's nothing we could do to stop that?
That is correct. On, I, I'm not a planner, but on very few setbacks where this project will have setbacks in, in scales. So I don't.
Please, this is not a hearing. You guys have had your chance to speak, and I, and we respect that you're listening. Please, I know everyone's passionate about this. I appreciate your passion.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to bring up the point, the fact that even if we didn't include this in our plan, the developer, the owner of that property could still develop that property. There's not, there's nothing that we could do about that?
Yes, that's correct, and we do have a mandatory set-aside ordinance, so whatever density that they can build at, they will provide either 15 or 20% affordable.
There was one question by Mr. White. If challenged, would legal fees be paid by the trust fund or taxpayers?
It would be, if it is through the program, it will be paid through, through the administrative portion of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That includes challenges. That is incorrect information.
And our challenge period is basically the month of July and August?
No, the challenge period begin, well, there's a deadline for developers, interested parties, Fair Share Housing Center, et cetera. They, they have until August 31st to file a challenge with the program that states with particularity that our plan violates the Mount Laurel Doctrine.
And does our plan violate the Mount Laurel Doctrine?
It does not.
Okay. If we are challenged during that timeframe, do we have to respond by August 31st, or does that extend past August 31st?
No, it's, the deadline is for filing on August 31st. So there is, there's about a two-month window where if there are other projects that we would like to include, either swap out or include, or just add to the project, we can do that in the next, in the next two months. And just for clarification, I know someone said there's a week left. We can change the plan. A plan has to be on file for 10 days in advance, so the, the time period is over. This, there is no more time.
Okay. And there's one more thing I wanted to mention. You'd mentioned that there is overnight parking on Russell Place?
Yeah. Send that one out. Be labeled.
I already, I already notified the chief, and I asked him to look into it.
Okay. To look into the overnight parking on overnight.
They were there last night. I was up there talking to them.
Okay.
Other comments? Miss Smallwood?
All right, that's it for me. Thank you very much, council president.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
Thank you, council president.
Councilwoman Boyer, please.
You all beat me to Russell Place. I think your husband was under force with my cousin. Yeah. Yeah. So I, I, yes, yes. So... So I can't help but think overdevelopment, like, none of us... Let me speak for myself. I don't want any of this. I think East Summit is the dumping ground for, you know, for developments. I think it's a horrible thing. I think when this plan came up, I was like, this ain't going to be good because I, you know, I know my folks down the hill. But, you know, excuse me, some folks come up and, you know, I don't know your political party or whatever, but, you know, we vote for the governor, we vote for these legislators. They're the ones that enacted this stuff, not us. This cascaded down on us. We're not, we didn't ask for this. We have to sit here and be rushed into this and forced into this without the residents, you all, who've made decisions over the years from Weaver Street, Glenwood, Vita Gala. The government didn't have to force Dennis Place. Government didn't have to force us to do that, right? But now, we're forced to do these things and threatened with lawsuits. But these folks are voted in, and this is what happens. These are the results of this stuff. Secondly, you know, the one thing that I do feel strongly about is Glenwood, Vita Gala, and Weaver Street. I have been advocating for those places since I was elected and even before that. And there was a comment last night that said, "Yeah, well, we can just wait to round four, round five, 10 years from now, and then we can address Weaver Street, Glenwood, and Vita Gala." It's like, what? I mean, those places haven't been rehabilitated, renovated, floors, cabinets, in 30, 40 years. I have family members that have been there for 30 years. So you're going to wait another 10? You're going to tell them, folks, well, just wait another 10? I am so glad we put those areas in our plan. And one of the reasons why some folks don't want them in the plan is so that there's this big conspiracy that we want to count them so we can't build affordable housing. So they shouldn't be in the plan? So we should just let those areas just be like that, right? Nobody comes up and talks about that. I mean, some folks, you know, they see people who live there every single day. And there are certain folks that come up here and advocate for affordable housing, but have yet said anything about rehabilitation in those areas. Not one word. We talk about disclosing and not having enough time for the public. I listened last night, too. They had three months to put this plan together. Again, it's your fine government at work. Three months. And then on top of that, and Joe Burge said it last night. He said, "You know what? Because of litigation, councils weren't even allowed to talk about it." As soon as I found out about this, I wanted to let you all know, I don't care about this. There is no conspiracy. I don't care. I'll let you know about anything. It doesn't matter to me. Because the thing about all of this is that we don't decide. We're not going out and seeking builders and picking out how homes are going to look and properties are going to look. It's not us. These folks come to us and say, "Hey, you have a property here. This is what we want to build there." That's how it happens. It's not, we're not deciding that. We're not going to pick out people. There's no backroom deals with developers. I don't know any developers. I don't want to be involved in the development plan at all. If they didn't come to us, there would be no Harmon Holdings. I do want something there. I drive by it all the time. It looks, the area looks crazy, right? But I don't want that. I agree with you. Question for you, our esteemed attorney. So if we pass this, does that mean that we have to do anything that's in this plan? So if we say, "Yes, fair share, this is our fair share housing plan, and then a couple of months from now, as we're getting feedback from the residents, we decide as a council, you know what, we don't want to do that." What would be the outcome of that decision?
Do you have a specific... As in removing a project, is that what you mean?
Removing a project. So we pass this, and then in August, maybe September, October, we decide as a council, you know what, we're not going to do Harmon Holdings. Then what is the repercussions of that?
Depends on what the plan looks like at that point. If there's new projects that you switch it out with. The thing is, like we've all said, it's very likely that what they want to build there would be allowed as of right anyway. So it's really, it will probably get built anyway. And as you said, this is a developer who purchased the property and wants to build there. So this is not something that the city is, you know, said, "We want this here." They came to us, like you said. So just to give a timeline of what's happening, I know Joe went over it last night, but it was at the beginning, and it was a very long meeting. So what happens is, if there is a challenge to whether our plan violates the Mount Laurel Doctrine, which is a distinctly separate issue from, "I want my project in there instead," which we might get some of those, too. That's, no one really, because this is all brand new. We don't know how this is going to operate. We don't know how the program judges are going to handle how the challenges go. Once there's a mediation session, once challenges are received, there's a mediation session with the program. By December 31st of this year, the city will let the program know whether it is amending its plan based on the challenges or whether it's moving forward with the plan that it adopted. So basically, we have until December 31st to make adjustments to our plan in one way or another, whether that is suggestions from Fair Share Housing Center, whether that's a new project comes in that doesn't necessarily challenge our plan, but comes in and proposes a new project. Whether, we don't know. I mean, if the remediation can't be done to residential standards on Harmon Holdings, we don't know. If we keep Harmon Holdings in, the city, you asked at the beginning, "Do we have to do our plan?" Well, if Harmon Holdings stays in, we would have to rezone for it so that the entire parcel is as of right for that project so that they can go directly to the planning board and not go to the zoning board to get variances. So that's called creating a realistic opportunity for the construction of affordable housing. So generally speaking, and I believe... Sorry, I always want to call people mister, but I know that Diego, I only know your first name. I apologize. He did say Milburn made changes to their plan. Milburn made unilateral changes to their plan and just refused to do one of their projects and got sued by Fair Share Housing Center. That is a completely different scenario than saying, "Hey, we've decided we're not going to do the MBC overlay zone. We're going to switch that with something else over here." That's completely different. That's part of the negotiation process with the program, with Fair Share Housing Center, with housing advocates, however, through this process. It is an evolving document. So I hope I answered that question, but if I didn't, ask me another pointed one. So...
So basically, I mean, that's not... The Harmon Holdings is probably not a good example because they purchased the land already.
Correct.
So another developer can't come in unless they purchase the land from them and say, "I want to develop something here." So we can't really swap out that land because we don't...
We don't own it, no. If we, so let's say that we had to... So like, we have the MBC overlay zone, okay. So let's say something comes up and we can't develop there for whatever reason. Let's say there's remediation we can't fix at the firehouse, and we can't remediate it to residential standards. I've had this happen where we found out that 100 years ago, there was a landfill underneath this area in one of my towns, and it cannot be remediated to residential standards. It was in our plan. Well, now you have to go and find something different. So, and maybe there's a project that comes in that's, you know, between now and August 31st that fits, and we take the MBC overlay zone out and we switch it with whatever. I'm just using it as an example because it's something we own, right? So we have control over that parcel, is what I'm saying. So that would be a situation where we could swap something out that either would likely yield the same amount of units or more or whatever. So that would be an instance where we could change our plan.
Last question. Last night, there was a comment about the Summit Housing Authority and them not knowing that they were going to be on this plan or not. First question is, we have been in discussions with them, and I've been an advocate of that. We've had conversations about that. And for the record, last year, went a whole entire year without them coming to the city. They didn't want to come to the city. Asked them all the time. Didn't want to come. Don't know what that was about, but hey, we can only assume. But would there be any reason not to put those developments, those units, Weaver Street, Vita Gala, and Glenwood in our plan?
For the benefit of the people who live there, no. Like I said last night, I do have experience with housing authorities and going for 9% tax credits to substantially improve housing authority units. They are availing themselves of 9% tax credits. There is a lot of money out there that they can use. And I believe the former executive director was trying to move, before he left, was working on that. And I, you know, I think the city wanted to make sure that... And like I said last night, this is a 10-year plan. It doesn't mean that it has to happen tomorrow. I know that they're definitely, you know, a very conscientious group, and they do want to make sure that they know exactly what improvements they want to make and how much it's going to cost. If year five, they want to move forward with tax credits, I want to make sure that they're in our plan so that at least one box is checked. And then at that point, the city, all the city would have to do is two resolutions, and they could go for it. So that's why they're in our plan. It's to make sure that there's no impediment. I mean, everyone's seen this process, right? We would have to amend the plan. We would have to put it on file for 10 days in advance. We'd have to have a planning board hearing. We'd have to have a council meeting. Then, because we're amending our plan in the program, I have to send it to the program to then be approved by the program in order for them to go for their tax credits. I'd rather do it right now. And I think the city would rather do it right now so that someday, year eight, nine, even 10, they're in a plan that now they can go and leverage money that's available to them because that is a requirement by the HMFA, that you're in an affordable housing plan. So it was never meant to leverage them in any way. It was more to make sure that they had a leg up in the process.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes, you're welcome.
Other comments from council? Councilman Palowski?
So I'm not sure if this is going to come out in the most logical order because I've been taking down a lot of notes here. But on the Harmon site, I heard a question asked but not answered. What, how many units under the current zoning would they be allowed to put there?
I'm not a planner, but I believe it was up to... I'm trying to remember what Tom Barron said last night. 24,000 square feet. So if you average, I think that's right, 24...
I think it's about 24.
About 24,000 square feet. So that would be about 24 units because you average about 1,000 square feet a unit.
Okay, so, and that was my understanding from what his comments were last night as well. So that with the current zoning, Harmon could do something similar, maybe with a little less square footage, more units, less parking, and no setbacks?
Correct.
And, okay, so, you know, and we can't, can we create like ex post facto zoning?
To prevent them from doing so?
Prevent them from doing that?
I don't recommend it.
Because I don't like the idea of big developments either, right? Like, if I had my way, they'd build like three nice residential homes there. And we would do a lot more of that in town. The at-home development or proposed development, I had thought that it was 40 units, but I heard Dennis White say tonight it would be 50 to 60. So that's even denser than what I thought was too dense previously. But I think what everybody needs to realize about that is we're talking about a multimillion-dollar parcel that the city would give, give every penny of our entire trust fund to go towards that. And the city would be on the hook for any overages with, you know, like I said, unprecedented density. There are reasons that the council declined to go with that development. When we were going through the process, you know, we only had a few months, and a lot of people are saying, "Wow, that's a long, long time." But one of the main things that was happening during that time was that the city was in discussions with builders, correct?
Yes, there were several builders. They're in the rejected development site that came forward.
And so one of those was Broad Street East.
Which one is that? I'm sorry.
Eight floors and, you know...
Oh, Incline Capital, yes.
200 units per acre.
Yes.
The Wells Fargo, I think, after much, a lot of back and forth, the lowest that we got them to was like 45 acres a unit. Or, sorry, 45 units an acre. 45 acres a unit would be awesome. It'd become rural.
Yes, 45 units an acre, yes.
Okay, and then Harmon, which got us down to approximately less than 20 units an acre, or about 20 units an acre.
It's a little more than that. I don't have the density. I can probably find it.
And those were the possibilities that we had, those three. And especially given the fact that they could probably do something denser without them being in our plan, you know, to me, that's the most appealing of the three if we were going to include any of them. I think we covered the potential environmental concerns, but you can't build residential units on a polluted site.
That's correct.
And so this council doesn't have the ability to say, "Well, you can go ahead and build on this superfund site because you're in our plan." We can't do that, right?
No.
Okay. Let's see. So, you know, I love all the public comments. I really do. And it's interesting to see who comes up and who says what. And it seems to me that there are a lot of advocates who come up, and they're pushing for what they would like to see rather than what the community as a whole necessarily wants or what we are necessarily required to do under these laws. People come in. You know, I see folks sitting here today who I think if they had their way, we'd add 1,000 affordable units in the next couple of years, right? You know, I mean, you know, this isn't Hoboken or Jersey City. We are a suburb, like Councilman Smallwood said, and that's why people move here. But I'm also hearing a lot of... But I'm also hearing a lot of is, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing, you know, I'm putting this into my own words, but what a lot of people seem to be saying is, we better go ahead and overdevelop Summit on our own terms so that we don't have to overdevelop Summit on somebody else's terms. And, you know, what I say to that is, how about we do everything we can not to overdevelop Summit? And, and I think that's what we're trying to do. It's what this council's trying to do. It's what I think that we should do and it's what I think that we are doing. I don't have a crystal ball and neither does anyone else, in, in particular, the fear mongers, and there are some, and the zealous advocates who are bolstering their advocacy with predictions of builder's remedy lawsuits. Now, if we pass this and file it by the 30th, we will be immune from builder's remedy lawsuits, right?
That's correct.
But if this council votes no and we don't pass it, and I know Ms. Kalmanson's going to vote no, but if we all did that, we would immediately be open to builder's remedy lawsuits?
Um.
July 1st.
Yeah.
On July 1st?
July 1st, yes. We have told, well, we have 48 hours from last night to file it.
Well, I think the one thing that everybody on every side of this that I've ever heard speak agrees is that we don't want to open ourselves up to that. So I'm, I'm going to be voting yes for this. But I do think we, we have some time to, to change the plan if we want to. Can't really go into what we talk about during closed session, but I know that I've had conversations along the way and many council people have. When can we start sharing? When can we start getting public input on all of these things? This isn't the way that we wanted to do it, but our hands were tied by Trenton as usual. But I do think there is a real chance that we can, can continue to, to get and incorporate public feedback before we do finalize whatever plan we go with. I heard somebody else say tonight, we should do the most possible to, to add affordable housing. And I, I agree with that, right? Like we need to do it, but in a sensible way. And even if we are ordered to do something or if we agree to do something, we can always do more, right?
Absolutely.
Fair share is not going to sue us and say, wait a minute, you said you were going to build 50 and how dare you try to build 75, right?
Fair share would be thrilled, so.
So question that I have for people who want to raise our, the number that we put in our plan as high as possible is why on earth would we want to obligate ourself to liability unnecessarily? I know why the advocates would want it because it would help them get what they would want. But we as elected officials have an obligation not to do that. And if after the dust settles and we know what our obligations are or what we've agreed to, we want to do more, we can. And I think it seems like we have done more, especially if Mr. White is right that if, according to our calculations, we only have to build one unit because we've overbuilt in the past, then I think that's a good thing and we can, we can continue to, to build more than we're required to if we want to. Let's see, six months ago, Fair Share Housing filed a motion to enforce litigants rights.
Yes.
Right? And so, you know, how, 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 how much time have we spent litigating that for six months?
Not much at all.
We didn't have a trial, right? There wasn't a lot.
I read, I read their motion, so that was about it.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, and part of the function of that was sadly, our, our court master passed away several years ago. So there isn't, the, the 50 new units would have been monitored differently in the past if, if Mr. Caden had still been, still been with us. So that kind of left, it, it left a hole in how this was, you know, how this was monitored over the years because we didn't have that person from the court checking up on everyone and keeping everyone, keeping an open dialogue going on.
But at the end of the day, Fair Share agreed that we fulfilled our obligations under the settlement agreement.
Yes, yeah. No, we, we worked really well together over the last six months on it, so, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I do want to say a lot of the narrative around this ever since 1975 has been that municipalities are terrible and they don't want to do their obligation. Yes, there's some municipalities that do that. I did say last night that the reason Summit has so many credits is because it has never avoided its affordable housing obligation. We, you know, we satisfied the 50 new units to Fair Share Housing Center's satisfaction. We had excess credits to, to apply toward round four. There were even more credits that you can see in the unmet need because we have so many affordable housing units in Summit. And some of them, as Ms., as Councilman Boyer said, are in, in pretty big need of renovating. And so that's why they're in our plan is to make, to make sure that those units are improved during the next 10 years. So I think, you know, it, it's, it's always easy to get down on, on a municipality to say, you need to do more, you need to do more. Summit has done a very good job that over the years with the little amount of land that they have, that they have created as many units as they have. So they should be commended for it, not, not brought down. I did want to address one thing because I thought it was a good, it was a good question from Ms. Connolly. She said, how do you approve a plan without changing the zoning? So the, the new statute that was adopted last year for round four says that the housing plans have to be submitted and, and then ordinances will be adopted by March of next year. And that's because there may be some tweaks to it and it is, you know, ordinances are a process. You have to introduce them, they go to the planning board and they come back. And thankfully, the one thing that they did take into account in Trenton before they, before they passed this was that that's an awful lot to do in, from January to, to June. So, so they, they are proposed ordinances. I believe we, we have the general bulk standards. We're also working with Harmon Holdings on the final outlook of that, of that ordinance. So that's, that's why it has not been adopted yet. It's, it's part of the plan, but the requirements are that, that they're in draft form to go to the program.
Okay. I just have two more things. Trust the experts, right? That's a popular refrain that we often hear. And I'm, my point here is just so that people can realize that there are political aspects to some of the things that you're reading on social media, on social media because, you know, some people who have sang that refrain of trust the experts change their tune all of a sudden as soon as the experts say something different like they did last night. So at the end of the day, we still all have to think for ourselves and, and come to our own educated opinions and try to do what's best for the city. Now, the folks on social media don't have a duty to do, to do that. We up here do and I think that's what we're doing. Now, on the Summit Housing Authority, and this is, this is not exactly related to, to the resolution that's before the council, but what I heard last night and we've had conversations is that there are millions and millions and millions of dollars out there that can be had to renovate our low-income housing developments here in Summit. But that the days of being able to get that kind of funding and maintaining residency preferences at the same time are gone. Those days are gone.
Yes.
And so I'd like to get some kind of a meeting with the Summit Housing Authority because I, I want to understand why we're going to keep maintaining the preferences. I like the preferences, don't get me wrong, in particular at Vito Gala, okay, which is, is for seniors and, you know, the way property taxes in this town keep going up, even though we pay half of them to the county, you know, the way they keep going up, people are getting priced out of their homes. I mean, once upon a time, Summit was a place where people came to and they lived out their days here and they're not doing that anymore. And, and that's a shame and, and I'd like to see that change. But if, if that's not going to change, I do like the idea of having a residency preference. But, you know, we're going to have to figure out another way to fund and it's not cheap to renovate these buildings. I mean, it'll cost, if we wanted to renovate all three of them and they probably all need it to some degree, we're talking 30, 40, 50 million dollars. And so from what I'm hearing also on the subject, even if we got rid of the residency preferences, it would still be mostly Summit residences that would come off of these waiting lists. And nobody who's in there would be removed from Summit, from those, from those units as a, as a result of that change. You know, when, when we were campaigning in 2023, Jamelle and I thought we had this great epiphany that we could redevelop the firehouse area to be affordable housing for people who work in Summit, right? We have police officers, firefighters, teachers, first responders that are just an integral part of the fabric of our community. And we were told that we were naive idiots and we were, apparently.
I never said that.
Because we're not allowed to do any of this.
I, I even said, black people.
They're like, no! But, you know.
I never called you that, just so that everyone knows.
Right, right. Well, and so, you know, another question that I have is, you know, is it, is it possible? Does anybody ever think outside of the box on these things, right? Could you affirmatively market a, a development like that to non-Summit residents, right? And then continue to do that, but also have the requirement that they work in Summit? And so I'd like, I'd like you to think about that a little bit because, you know, if, if we could do that and guarantee it for, for our first responders and our teachers, I'll be the first one knocking on your door, Dennis, to put something good together and get that going. But as it stands, we can't, we can't do that. And so, you know, what better service could we give to the people who take care of us on a daily basis than to put in affordable housing like that? I can't think of any. So that's all I have to say.
And, and as far as what you said about the, that it would mostly go to Summit residents, I don't know what the, what the waiting list currently looks like, so I can't tell you how many. I just know from past experience that usually it's, many times, there are people that live, that either grew up in Summit, want to come back or are Summit residents who are looking for affordable housing in Summit. That, that happens very often just throughout the state. Because obviously you, you want to live near where you work or where you grew up, so that does, that does happen often, so.
People have roots.
Council president, I just have one question for Nancy.
Please.
Well, first, real quick, I, when we were campaigning, I had thought, you know, the Mount Laurel Doctrine, that we could do 100% affordable housing for the historically oppressed people and just all black people, right? And we can boost up the, the numbers in Summit like a little inkwell again. But apparently, yeah, you can't do that, so. Can you, can you explain the difference between moving forward with immunity and moving forward without immunity? Because I want residents to understand that approving this and keeping our immunity is, and maybe you, maybe you can shed some light on this, more beneficial than voting this down and not having any immunity. So if you can explain that, because I really think people should, should understand that.
Sure. So if you, if you don't have immunity from exclusionary lawsuits, and that can be a builder's remedy, that can be Fair Share Housing Center coming in and, and suing you to force you to comply, then a builder or Fair Share Housing Center can come in and say, I am the catalyst for change, approve my project, which is usually about three times, two to three times what is reasonable on a particular parcel. I'm providing a 20% set aside. Judge, I want you to order that they build my, that they rezone so that my project gets built. And that doesn't happen just once. That hap, that could be three, four, five, six developers coming in at the same time. And so, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Excuse me. Give me one second.
Having, having the immunity.
It's been a very long six months. Forgive me, this is my 20th affordable housing plan. Okay, so now if they, so then they, they become the catalyst for change. So then now the judge becomes the one, not the planning board, not the city council, is the arbiter of whether that project is reasonable and should be built. And then it's by court order, it's not through a collaborative process with the developer making sure that it fits, making sure that it conforms with the community, it's an order. So that is a builder's remedy. I believe Diego asked the question, if we lose a challenge, is it like losing a builder's remedy lawsuit? No, it is not. Like I said before, if you have immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits, you move forward with your plan. There, there may be tweaks to your plan, you may, a project may fall out of the plan because for whatever reason it's not suitable, it ends up not being suitable. I've had that happen where, you know, the wetlands buffers have significantly increased over the last five years because of DEP and now a project is completely unsuitable, you have to take it out and put something back in. You have the control over that. And just because a project falls out doesn't mean that now you, you know, now a builder can come in and provide a more dense project just because that one project fell out of the plan. You have control over how the city amends its plan and how it moves forward with the plan. So if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, and, and in this process, like I said, the challenger has to show that our plan has violated the Mount Laurel Doctrine, not just their exclusionary, I want my project built, which is what a builder's remedy is. So I don't know, does that answer your question?
It does. So in short, we vote this down and Harmon Holdings can come back in and say, you know what, I want to, I want to build 50 units there now. And we have no say in it. The judge could say, you know.
I mean, we'd fight them, so. But, you know, but, yeah, but yes, you started a different number.
If we don't turn this in on time, right? Then we don't have our immunity. It's harder to fight in court if you can't at all, the judge may. So, so it's that liability that you put the city into.
That's correct.
Okay. So, all right, thank you, Nancy.
Council president, I know you, I know you've been trying to get, get to the mayor. I just want to.
She's got a lot of good stuff to say.
I'd be very, very quick. I, I was remiss and I wanted to say something before he left. Mr. Alcott, Ascot, I'm sorry. I wrote, I can't even read my own handwriting. I'm sure we do not want to get into the same situation that we did with Ashwood Court and Habitat for Humanity. So I'm going to put him on the spot and make sure that Augusta will make sure that that does not happen if and when a project does go adjacent to your property, so. Right, Augusta? We're good?
We can work together.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Council president.
Yes, oh gosh.
I'm the mayor. I have a.
Council, Councilwoman Kalmanson.
Thank you. I, I have a follow-up question about what Harmon Holdings can.
Sure.
Build currently.
Yes.
You said they could build 24 units on what they have now that's zoned for mixed use.
Yes.
Would they also be able to accommodate the parking for that? Would that be like 36 spaces?
Uh, it, it would have to accommodate that, yes.
So they can, they could accommodate the parking and 24 units?
Uh, I, I'm not a planner, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
But, yeah, but it would, but any, so any plan, any conforming plan would have to meet the parking as well, so.
Okay, because right now we're rezoning, or the plan is to rezone a residential lot for the parking.
For additional park, yeah. I believe that, yeah, and I believe they have more than RSIS standards with that, with, with the addition of the residential lot. So it's more than what would be required of the, of the project on the NB zone parcels.
Okay.
So, that's my understanding of it.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm not going to jump in front of you.
So patient. I really will keep this quick. Actually, Councilman Palowski, I'm going to piggyback on something that he said because I just want to be clear that this plan. because I just want to be clear that this plan, if we adopt this plan, it does not preclude us from finding creative solutions like we are doing currently to create affordable housing. For instance, the United Methodist Church with the Bergen County United Way, that is a great example of an opportunity that I think addresses the affordable housing desires of our community without changing even the landscape. So, and, and so it does protect us from overdevelopment. So I sort of want to piggyback on what, what Councilman Palowski said about, you know, sort of, let's put in the number that we believe to be appropriate and afford ourselves the opportunity to be thoughtful about where and how we create affordable housing in Summit. So that is something I'd like to comment on. I also think that that allows us to, in the same way, be thoughtful about less dense and more integrated affordable housing within the community, which has always been a desire of this community, and I think that that's fitting for Summit. And then, the last thing I want to say, well, no, that's, that's a lie. I did visit Madison, thank you, Mr. McBride, for making the introduction, to tour some of their a hundred percent affordable housing sites that are smaller and are neighborhood-based, and, and it was very eye-opening. So I think that there's, there's an opportunity to do something similar here, but let's keep Summit in, in charge of how that looks and how that happens. And I do think that Madison has done an incredible job, and I, and I think that we have a lot to, we could learn from, from them, and they are open and willing to, to share their, their insights, so. That, and then lastly, again, not lastly, process. If, if this plan gets approved, the process after, after that, in terms of a project, can you sort of walk the public through? It's not like this plan goes through, these projects happen. It's, goes through a process of ordinance development and adoption, and then the project itself would have to go before the planning board. And I just want to, can you speak to that, please?
So after, after the challenge period, if we, if we have a challenge, then we'll mediate that. Then by December thirty-first, we tell the program, "We've amended our plan, either to add sites, keep it as-is, et cetera, please approve our plan." Either way, it's, "Program, please approve our plan." Then the program will evaluate our plan, make recommendations to the trial court on whether the trial court should approve it. Once we get that approval, we will have until March of 2026 to adopt all of the implementing ordinances, if there's resolutions we have to pass, et cetera, et cetera. So we have until, in the statute, it says March 2026. A lot of this has taken a lot longer than, than everyone thought, so that, that deadline, if I recall correctly, can be extended based on where we are with the process. So, once the, once rezoning occurs, then we'll, we'll just take Harmon Holdings because it's the topic of most of the conversation today. Harmon Holdings would be rezoned so they can go as of right to the planning board. The planning board process is exactly the same as it would be for any other project. So they would have to bring in a conforming plan, it would go to the planning board, the planning board does their planning board thing, and they would get site plan approval, they would have to amend certain things, whatever that, whatever that may be. There is a restriction on cost generative features, so you can't say that everyone has to have a gold toilet or something like that. You, you can't make the project more expensive because they are providing affordable housing, which does, which does cut into the, the profit of the, of the building. So there, there can't be cost generative features, right? So, so once it goes to the planning board, they get site plan approval, then it's, it's like any other development, so. But, but they do have to, if there is remediation that has to be done, it has to be done to DEP standards, and that is all the cost is borne by the developer. I'm sure the planning board would require that, you know, that they give Phase One, possibly a Phase Two, whatever, and any sort of letter that has been remediated before, you know, so whatever the planning board requires. I'm not a planning board attorney, so I don't want to speak too far into that, but anything that would be required of any other development in town from the planning board is also required for any, for any project in our plan, so.
Thank you. And so, and lastly, I just want to sort of reiterate this by asking this question. So, so to be clear, if we say yes to this and, and the votes to submit this plan, which can't be revised.
At this point, at this point, but by June thirtieth, no.
We can't revise it, so it's either yes to this plan or no to this plan. Those are your choices, right? If we say yes to this plan, we maintain our immunity, which you're recommending because that protects us from scary big builders coming in here. Or, and if we say no to this plan, we are subject to as many developers as want to come knock on our doors to build wherever the heck they want, if they own the land.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna summarize that by saying that I believe that it would be irresponsible not to adopt this plan and endorse this plan today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I was more long-winded than I expected.
All right, Councilman Palowski.
So Mayor Fagan mentioned inclusive development, right? And so if we had a twenty-unit obligation to, to create twenty affordable units, we could do that by building five separate twenty-unit developments with four affordable in each, right?
Yes. You're making me do math, but yes, that's fine.
But we also could build some smaller, a hundred percent affordable.
Yes.
And we've done that in the past.
Yes, we have.
Yes, okay. And I, I think that's preferable, and you can, and even though it's a hundred percent affordable, if it's in a, a neighborhood that's not, right, then it's inclusive.
Yes.
And then the second thing is, I just wanted to mention that I'm glad that the parcel on Ashwood Court is not a part of this plan. Right now, it's serving as just some public space and a path between Ashwood Court and the Habitat for Humanity site, but, you know, it was, people call it the postage stamp, but I think the, in a prior council, they wanted to build at least two affordable units there to, to try to chip away at it. And, you know, I understand wanting to chip away, but on that street, in that particular spot, the size of it, that would have been a real shame, so. Now I'm really done, if you start talking.
All right, anybody else? All right, let me just wrap up. So I'm thinking about where we are in, in this process, and it's kind of dovetails with where a lot of our kids are. If you have a fifth grader, an eighth grader, a senior in high school, or a senior in college, you've just gone through a process of graduation. And graduation is a time to celebrate your achievements, but then you look forward to what's to come. And that's kind of where we are right now. We are ending round three. Round three officially ends on June thirtieth. We have a lot to celebrate. We did it. Not only we did it, we surpassed our numbers. And, you know, people can argue whether it was a hard number or not a hard. The reality is, I have opinions about that, but it doesn't matter. We overachieved. That's epic, and a lot of people in this room have a lot to do with making that happen. And we should be super, super psyched that we were able to do that. That is awesome that we did that. And we have our professionals to thank for that as well, people up here. And what's fantastic about that is we did it, and we kept the character of Summit, the character of Summit. We have a master plan. People like to throw that out there all the time. It's a super important document. It's the thing that our community has the most input in. Hundreds, if not thousands, of people have input into this thing. We, people move here because they love the community. And there's this, always this siren call, you know, "We need more housing, we can't do it. Let's build a monstrosity on Broad Street West. Let's add huge amounts of density." And I'm glad the community said no, but that doesn't mean they said no to affordable housing. And I'm super, super proud of all the people up here. It's a win, and we should celebrate it. And I know a lot of people love to chip and, you know, tear it down, and it's not a real number, and all this kind of stuff. But Fair Share thought it was a real number, and we should celebrate that. That's awesome, and that's part of graduation. Now, when you graduate, you move on to the next phase of life. The next phase of life has a lot of uncertainties. It's a lot of things you don't know how it's all gonna work out. If I do well, I like my classes, what am I gonna do? And that's kind of where we are in round four. Anyone who can tell you exactly what's gonna happen in round four is lying to you because nobody knows. Hasn't been done. You don't know how these court masters are gonna act. We can't even agree how to interpret twenty-five percent. And that, you know, goes back to the whole part of this legislation. There's tons of things about this legislation that I don't like. And I heard somebody waxing lyrical about what well-constructed legislation this was. That was the only thing I really said, "Really?", when I was watching last night. It's the complete opposite. If you've listened to me over the last six months, I've said nothing good to say about this process and how this legislation has played out and how it's supposed to allow public input. It couldn't have been farther from the truth how this thing was crafted around allowing all this stuff. And people can score points by saying, "Oh, we didn't know." You know, we, this Councilman Boyer says, "You get, you get what you vote for." And New Jersey voted for these people, and that's the legislation that we got, and we gotta live with it. And, and so, and, and we will. We will. I, I do take, you know, I, I object to this view that we're trying to skirt by, and we don't, we're, we're trying to do the minimum amount that we can do. That's not true. We want to comply with the law. We want to promote affordable housing. We want to do it, though, in a way that's consistent with the character of our community. And some people may not like that, because as again, you have this thing where, you know, people have, and, and I applaud them. They, they want, their number-one goal in life is to create affordable units. Great, that's passionate, I love that. But as elected officials, we also represent everyone who lives here and moves here. And we've got to think about creating affordable housing in a way that, you know, people don't want to live in Hoboken or Jersey City. They moved here for a reason. And, and so, I, I, like I said, I, I can only speak for myself. I want to have affordable housing in, in this town, in this community. We just proved that it's possible to do, and we're gonna do it the right way. And so, and, and so on that, like I said, I, I was quoted around, you know, saying we're gonna be challenged. I, I try and live in the real world. We will be challenged. Any world where a housing advocate thinks our number is one, and our, our professional who's been doing this for thirty years thinks it's eighteen, I, I can't, that's okay, people can have differences of opinion. We will be challenged. Fair Share challenged every single community who just said, "You know what? The, our, our unmet need number, I think you calculated it incorrectly." Blanket, they sued every single town. They're advocates for this stuff, that's what they do. They're passionate, God bless them. But I, I'm not gonna be able to change that, I have to live in the real world. Where challenges are gonna happen, and we have to work hard enough to create a plan where our plan holds up to what we think is the law. Now, what we think is the law, we have professionals. I'm not an affordable housing attorney. We write checks, so we, we get this thing, and, and she does a fantastic job for us. We write checks to Joe Burgess. And it's easy to, you know, to sit on Facebook and say, "I think this is the interpretation, and you're not doing this all right." Well, you have the luxury of, if you're wrong, not having to deal with the consequences. We have to deal with the consequences if you're wrong, and that's a big responsibility. And so we have to take that seriously, and we have to create a plan that we think is in the best interests of our community, that will create affordable housing. But it'll do it as again, I'm gonna, broken record, in the character of the town that we all love and we chose to be in. The development in East Summit, Harmon Holdings. I'm against overdevelopment. The first iteration that we saw, I just don't, tell them to come back when they're serious. It was, it was way, way too big, and they did come back, and they came back again, and they came back again. And we had a lot of negotiations around it. The fact is, it is right kind of where the current zoning is. And to, to remove them when they were what looks, they could make an argument, and I'm not a lawyer, that we were trying to be reasonable, they could come back in August and say, "You know what? We want the thirty-five units instead." And the judge would say, "Well, you know, it looks there, you know, where's your other developments in there?" And we'd have thirty-five units on that spot instead of twenty. That's a possibility, and you have to weigh risks and how you're gonna do these things. And I completely am sympathetic to the traffic in that area. We have to study that. It, it's, anyone who lives in Summit knows that. It's a tough spot, but they, they own the property. I can't take the property away from them, I don't have that power. So, so we have to live with what we, we have. And, but, that being said, all those concerns that are incredibly valid around property remediation and all that kind of stuff, because they're part of this, they don't get a pass on any of that. They have to remediate the property to get their building permits and such. They have to comply with building codes. So, Mr. Ascot, you, you will have, they will get fined, they will do everything if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They don't get a pass on any of these things, on what we all have to do around development, if, if I'm correct. So, so, you know, you have to look at this thing and say, "You know, this is kind of what we're gonna have to do, and we'll have to figure out the traffic." It's not ideal, but it's the world we live in. This is the law that we're, we're, we're dealing with, and we have to live in the real world and what we've been, the, the hand that we've been, been gotten. The last two things I'll say, one is, there's been some of these suggestions, you know, about the Broad Street West and about building all these exclusive affordable units there and fifty to sixty, what have you. It's been mentioned, you know, one of the things around Mount Laurel, since its inception, we are required to create affordable housing units, and we've done that. What the law has never said that communities need to do is it has never had to be taxpayer-funded. Never. No community's been told, "You need to raise taxes to build affordable housing." It's not our system. That's why we have developers who are in bed, literally and figuratively sometimes, with housing advocates who both want the same thing. Developers want density because that's how they make money, that's all they're in it for. They're not philanthropic because they care about affordable housing, they want to make money. And the affordable housing guys get something out of it, too, because they get twenty percent affordable units. That's how affordable housing gets done, because for the most part, taxpayers don't fund it. And I am against any plan in Summit where we're gonna ask our taxpayer to provide affordable housing. We ask them to do it all, it's too expensive already. And that project on Broad Street West, you, we're giving away a taxpayer asset for free, which is the property value. It's free. That's not my property, it's all of your property, it's the taxpayer's property. And there's tons of things in our town that need investment. You know, the Tatlock Field House is falling apart because. because councils kicked that can down the road for a decade. The Tier Garage sadly is falling apart. We're going to have to pay millions of dollars to fix that thing. Infrastructure costs money. And giving away city property is basically, you got to find the money somewhere else. So I have a very hard line around that. That's a no-brainer. Now, that doesn't mean our plan can include smaller developments, as the Methodist Church is a great example. I was supposed to meet with someone 45 minutes ago to start talking about someone else giving money into our town to do an affordable housing project. And I'm going to be late. There are lots of opportunities to do smaller all affordable things. And we will figure that out. Do I have them all in the back of my pocket right now? No. We have 10 years. And I think if you look at our track record on what we've done, we have done it. And so, for people who want to poo-poo and say, "You're not serious. You don't care. You're not going to do this." I take offense at that. Because our track record says that's not true. And I know I'm going to work hard for the next six months at least, because I'm on the thing. But I'll continue to be involved in this so we can provide affordable housing in a way that we can all, that is fitting in our community. So that's why I'll vote yes on this as well. The last thing I want to say. Madam Mayor, you said it correctly. As elected officials, I don't have the luxury to hope that some other people bail me out if I'm going to vote on a very narrow issue. You have to look at this vote and say, "What are the consequences? If I decide, you know, to a point that property has too many problems on Harmon Holdings, I'm going to vote down the plan." And say somebody else decides to do that, too. We will have no plan. And we can be sued starting in July. That is my perspective, in my opinion, completely irresponsible and a dereliction of duty as an elected official. Because you are opening up lawsuits across the entire town, including the little parcel of land in Harmon Holdings. And you can't do that as an elected official. It's just not, it's not right. We have a binary option here. We didn't make the law. This is what we have. And you have to do what's right for the entire community. And with that, I'll end my long-winded statement. All right. All right. So do we need a roll call for this?
I think we should.
I think we should, too.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Kalmanson?
Nay.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
President O'Teerney?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Okay. We're now on to our public comments section of our meeting. If there's something that was not covered, you want to talk about something that wasn't on our agenda, come on down and make a comment.
Breathe first. Okay, I will breathe first. Do I need to be saying my name again? No. All right.
You're right.
You know who I am?
Thank you.
All right. I'm disappointed. I understand. This should have been brought to us much sooner so there was time to revise and resubmit. You've got to do better. Councilman Boyer, Councilman Smallwood, you both represent me. I live in Ward 2. I've never seen you in my neighborhood. I don't think any of my neighbors have seen you in our neighborhood. I'd really, you know, my neighbor Mark Kohler last night invited everybody to come and tour the area. I'm happy to have him, I'm happy to go with him as well to have you tour the area with us. I'd like to see you in our neighborhood. You represent us whether we voted for you or not. My vote is private when I go into a ballot box. You all represent us. You are the mayor for everybody. Democrat, Republican, independent, not affiliated. You are the mayor for East Summit and all other parts of Summit. We don't see you there. We need you to come and see us. You need to see what we want. You need to hear our views. And you need to consider putting some affordable housing in other parts of the town. There's not an estate that goes on the market that you say, "Hey, let's put up a big building in one of these neighborhoods." It would never happen. Yet it happens all the time where we live. We are hard-working individuals. We take pride in our properties. We've beautified Russell Place an awful lot since we've moved in 16 years ago. We love living in Summit and we deserve to be treated as full-class Summit residents. We pay taxes like everybody else. Please respect us. Please come see us. Please talk to us. Please return our phone calls when we make them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President? I'm sorry to interrupt, but as the person who writes the checks and pays the bills, or can we allow our professionals to go since?
Oh, yes. You guys are on the clock, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Augusteau.
I just have a question. Were there contingencies on the Morris Ashwood property when it was sold to, sold to Harmon Holdings? I mean, in other words, was it contingent on this zoning change to accommodate the property? Or is it, because right now, there are two parcels that they, I presume they own both, right? Three? Okay, three parcels. Two of which are zoned sort of, you know, business retail, one of which is single-family. So was the deal done, you know, with the, with the understanding that this would be rezoned so they could build this big? Or was this just, you know, was that post-sale? Just a question. I'm curious. I don't, I don't know if anyone here can answer it, but.
Just to clarify.
They own the property. We're not privy to whatever the negotiations would have been with.
Okay.
Do you mean if they just bought it, like purchased it outright?
Yeah, they just purchased it outright, you know, with the existing zoning. Or did they purchase it with the understanding that this would be rezoned so they could build this big? I mean, it's, because, you know, one of those properties is single-family housing right now. I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so they did not, I don't think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they did not purchase the property with the understanding that the city would rezone it. Whether they had a contingency agreement with the seller that says if they don't ultimately do it, we can back out of the deal, I have no idea. That's a private transaction that the city has nothing to do with.
All right. I was just wondering if there was any insight there. Okay, thank you.
So my main issue, and you, Mayor, you mentioned it. You know our situation in Russell Place, which is the parking issue. I had not seen the master plan. I don't even know how many parking lots the new, this project is going to have. But it's just the traffic study. And getting off the subject, but it's part of it. What exactly can you do for us with this parking situation that we go through every single day, especially in school days? So now we're going to have this, this building coming out, which is fine. I told you I'm pro-project. I just wanted to see maybe smaller. Instead of 20 units, maybe 15 or 10. It's going to be a mixed use, which is wonderful. But what can you do for us? What can, is there something that you and all of you can do for us in Russell Place, which, Risa say, we keep our homes beautiful. I mean, you can just pass, we have new residents. There's only very few of us left. I'm there over 30 years. This, what Risa's being, less than me. We like, we like a family. We are, created Neighborhood Watch. We all communicate everything that goes on. I know they want to do, want to bring this to a lawsuit or maybe we can get to a resolution. We're going through all of that because we do have to meet the requirements of affordable housing. But please, we need help with this parking. You need to do something. There's sessions in other towns where people need stickers to park for two hours the most. I have a brownstone in downtown Newark, in James Street. There's no one that can park there. People used to come and park and leave their cars there. That's not allowed. You have to have a sticker. There's a couple of locations where you're not allowed to do that. People come and leave their cars in this tree, in our black park all day. Just help us with that. We just need help with the traffic. That will really alleviate half of the problem that we go through. So just keep that in mind for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Again, I asked the question about why can't this project be moved down to the Broad Street West? I just don't get that, you know, because it's so big. You know, why can't, yeah, why can't it go down, why can't they have it developed? You know, they fought that, that was too, it was incongruous for that area, that big project they wanted to do. It didn't work out. And that because they said, you know, it was going to be, you know, the density was ridiculous. This is going to be double the intensity. I cannot imagine where they're going to put the parking, as this lady just said. Oh, we have such parking problems now. It's a nightmare.
Yeah, I would say that it is not going to be double the density of the Broad Street West proposal. It's roughly 20-odd units. I'm not, again, not a planner and I don't want to speak out, but.
Well, I got my information from somebody that is.
But it conforms roughly with the zoning of two of the three lots.
We're going to have to see.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And again, not a planner and I don't want to.
And that's a concern we have, a very big concern. Because you're talking 20 units and I say 40 cars. And then plus the, the business area is going to need parking. You can't park them, Ashwood, you can't park on Broad.
How big are these units? Do we know if they're like one by two?
You guys already spoke.
Crazy. I mean, that's a big concern. It's a very big concern. And you got to get down to the area, as the resident said, and see. I mean, you cannot overnight, we have the police working with us. Because Summit had put in a bot system. And these residents that have no place to park were parking all over there. Russell Place, Pearl, Ashwood illegally, using the bot system. And it's a nightmare. So what's going to happen when you put in a big monstrosity as this? It's not going to work out. So we're going to really have a big issue here.
Thank you.
Hopefully it'll be a relief I'm speaking on something different. Diane Leota, 606 Springfield Avenue. And good evening to everyone.
Yeah, this begins with the microphone.
I'm sorry. I feel like this is sticking right at me. Is that better? Okay. Our home is on Springfield Avenue. And we have an easement for a county pipe that leads to the Salt Brook. There are three catch basins that catch the rainwater that feeds into this county pipe that are located close to our home. One right at the top of our driveway, two on the opposite side of the street of a home that was abandoned for close to 25 years that has finally been completed, has been on the market and not one unit has sold. So we continue to still clean the catch basins from across the street and at the top of our driveway. We have maintained our property that borders the Salt Brook to minimize the erosion. And we have also maintained the three catch basins, as I said, and clear the debris on a regular basis. The pipe that leads into the brook on our property appears to be made of clay and part of that pipe broke off before we purchased the home. And our home was purchased in 1992. We keep very large rocks around the pipe to stabilize and support what is remaining so that it reaches into the brook. We are noticing that the pipe does have cracks in it, though. We would like our pipe and property to be part of the stream stabilization project of the resolution that passed last week on the 16th. And it was adopted by this council. I appreciate that Councilman Boyer stated that we needed to stabilize the entire Salt Brook because I am along that part of Salt Brook that has not been discussed. And I also appreciate that you've already begun the process by having conversations with Congressman Tom Kaine and the Army Corps of Engineers. And thank you for recognizing that it is not only just one property so that other homeowners can receive the same level of intervention as the property that has received so much attention. Thank you all for your concern and knowing that the broader systemic issue of our watershed and aging and lack of infrastructure reflects a problem that affects many residents. I know that you live around the corner from me, so you're very familiar, well, your property's not on the brook, but how the brook will flood at the time of the intense rain. As a matter of fact, I believe that our engineer had discussed the same thing, that it does flood in the time of intense rain. But it can almost look like it's dried up within a few days. So there was quite a bit of things that were being mentioned last week that had to do with liability, the amount of property that was lost on the home that has been so, has been discussed primarily.
Can you just wrap up, please?
Am I over my three minutes? Oh, excuse me. I feel like I've spoken less than anyone that came up here this evening. But I, that's okay. I can bring it back for another meeting if my three minutes is up. That's fine. And I've submitted to you the notes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? All right. We'll close public comments. We now have council members' comments and new business.
Council President?
Remember, we have a meeting on next Tuesday, Jamal.
I know. While it's, while it's fresh, while it's fresh on my mind, Ms. Connolly, we, Ms. Connolly was dealing with a problem that was going on for, I don't, I don't want to over-exaggerate, but like seven years, right? And we got that figured out. And I run down Russell Place all the time. I got friends on Russell Place. I'm in your neighborhood. And you, you're like a rock throw for me, too. So we, you know, we're neighbors. But let's connect. And I have a safety meeting after this so we could talk about the whole parking thing. Because if you're dealing with parking issues, parking overnight and everything, we can, we can work that out, definitely. The second thing is, just, just a reminder, I, you know, I just want you to understand and I hope that you're hearing us that not voting for this opens the door to, yeah. So I just, you know, I want to be clear about that. So, okay.
We're just not happy that it took you this long to get us something so that it can't be revised.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I'm not, I, I, no, I, I get it. I understand. And I'm not happy with this process either, trust me. I think it's ridiculous. The other thing is, oh, so the Salt Brook. I was at the top of the Salt Brook, Brayton School, the other day. And, I mean, there is like so much debris in that, in the gutters up there. It was, I mean, it is, it is unbelievably ridiculous. So Brayton School at the top runs all the Salt Brook, runs all the way down to New Providence, right? I've, as a kid, I used to walk the Salt Brook and everything. And I'm wondering, is your, is that a county pipe that you have? So we'll, we'll, we'll talk, right?
And we've been maintaining our property so it doesn't erode that I don't.
No, I understand. I understand. I think fundamentally, though, with, with that property on the corner, that was a different situation. That, that pipe is like, it's not even there. It's a huge pipe and, you know, the county. But the, the, the thing about it is those conversations about the entire Salt Brook started like two years ago. And the, the main goal is to get the whole Salt Brook, you know, taken care of. And we had, we've started those conversations, me and Councilmember Hamlet. So that is, that's not going away, you know, so that's still a focus, but that's it.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Pulowski?
First, I know for a fact Councilman Boyer is right at home in East Summit, in particular Russell Place, where he spent a lot of time on various issues, including the park line and otherwise. Second, parking on Russell Place. We will also talk about this in the Parking Committee that I'm on with Councilmen. that I'm on with Councilman Smallwood. And one thing for you to think about and discuss with your neighbors, and we ask this often, when people complain about too many cars parking, parking for too long, is would you ever consider single side of the street parking or alternate side of the street parking?
It's single side of the street.
It already is?
Yeah, it's only on our side. It's only on the odd side of the street.
Okay, all right. Well, then it's probably an enforcement issue, but we will, we'll talk about that at our next meeting as well.
And it's overnight parking too.
What's that?
If people park there overnight, they just, neighbors, have more cars than, than their spaces.
I would suggest, why don't you guys talk after the meeting?
Sure. Okay. The plan for the Harmon Holdings, uh, uh, project is on the Planning Board website. I think it's been up there for a few weeks since they came, or since we were allowed to present it for the first time. I'm not sure what the date of that Planning Board meeting was, but.
It's 29th.
Yeah. And then on the Salt Brook, Ms. Leota, we, I, the second I got your email today, I forwarded it to Director Schreger, our city engineer. And, you know, my comment was that while the county is going to come out to deal with the one pipe, it should come out and deal with yours as well. I'm glad that your property is currently stable, but who knows how long that can last. And I think the big problem is when it breaks further in, right? You're saying that your, your pipe is cracked. When it, when it breaks, you know, 10, 20 feet in, that's when all havoc is released and you lose two thirds of your property, like your neighbor a little further up, the ravine. That's what we always called it, the ravine. But that's it. So I got.
Other comments?
I have one really quick thing.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Just right now. I ran out because there are some power outages, so if neighbors are concerned about power outages, JCP and L is on their way. They are in Summit currently fixing one. There are a couple of pockets. There are some transformers that can't handle the heat, just like we can't. So, just so you know, I just wanted everybody to be aware that that's happening.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Any other comments? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.